Good. All right, I'm going to call it to order. This February 11th, 2025 city council meeting. And our first order of business is an invocation and pledge led by council member Jeff Harris.
Please stand and pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts lifting up our city, its leaders, and all who are part of local, state, and federal governance. We ask you bless our city council members and staff with wisdom, understanding, and discernment. May we serve the needs of every citizen with integrity, compassion, as our state and federal leaders seek justice and to promote peace. Grant us clarity as we make decisions that affect our community. Make our hearts be guided by your love, and your actions reflect the commitment to truth, fairness, and the common good. Here, Lord, give us guidance and courage to make the difficult decisions when needed, and the humility to listen to the voices of the citizens that we represent. We also pray for the citizens of this community. May we work together with mutual respect and kindness, supporting one another, and lifting up those in need. Thank you for the wonderful gift of rain that we've been blessed to receive for the past couple of days. Bless our city, Lord, with prosperity, safety, and peace. In your holy and heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Should be a preacher.
Announcements of community interest. Stuart?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two quick announcements tonight. Welcome to everybody, and look forward to having y'all here. Our activity guide came out last week. I don't know if everybody's seen it yet, but if you haven't, I encourage you to pick one up. If you want to know what's going to be going on in the city in 2025, it has just about everything. Parks and Rec, library, there's even some police and fire stuff in there, too. So, we sent 8,000 out, or sent out, last week, sent them out to 8,000 homes. There's also some copies here, and there's copies at Parks and Rec, and there's copies at the library. And you can certainly check it out online, as well on the city's website. Actually, page through it, just like it was a magazine. So, encourage everybody to take a look at that. And one final announcement about, I know we've gone, I think we've talked about this the last three meetings, but the someone's special dance is this Saturday, and there's still some tickets left. They stopped tickets, stopped ticket sales tomorrow at 5:00. So, if you're still looking for something to do Saturday night with your son or daughter or grandson, granddaughter, give Parks and Rec a call and get you a ticket. It's a fun time out there. And that's our two for this week. We'll have more come up as we get into spring.
Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you.
Anybody else on council have an announcement? I did look at the Parks Magazine that was, arrived at the house, and I learned there was a park in town that I didn't even know existed. So, that's nice. The Habitat Park. So, I'm going to have to go check that out. All right, we have the visitors' citizens forum. Shelley, anyone sign up?
Yes, sir.
The next item is the consent agenda. These are considered routine, and can be approved in one motion unless a council member, staff, or member of the public asks for separate consideration. Does anyone want to pull an item from the consent agenda? All right, so I'll accept a motion then on the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda A, B, and C.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. I'm glad to see some people in the audience here tonight. I'm surprised so many people want to come talk about natural gas pipelines, but I'm looking forward to your comments. Let me say something about item 4A. 4A is an ordinance. This would be the first reading of that ordinance. But it's also a public hearing. Initially, people sign up to speak on a specific item, but even if you didn't sign up, you can speak. How many people have signed up?
We do have four citizens speakers signed up.
Another thing to note, it's against the law for us to get together at the coffee shop and talk about this stuff. So, I'm as interested in you all are to see how this turns out tonight. I have no idea. We'll learn together. Who's, why don't we start with a presentation? Will that be with Mr. Paxton?
Yes.
Mayor, I do need to read this ordinance.
Oh, you're right, it's an ordinance. Excuse me, Mr. Paxton. Please read it in, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 2025-03, an ordinance annexing an approximate 263-acre tract of land into the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas. The property out of the William Watts survey number 66, abstract number 365, and David Schuchard survey number 67, abstract number 299. Such property located within Kerr County, Texas, and the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Kerrville, Texas, and generally located adjacent to State Highway 173, and between Kerrville-Shriner Park and Comanche Trace Drive. Further describing the property to be annexed, adopting a service plan for the property annex, establishing the zoning for the property to be annexed, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have four citizens speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thanks for keeping me on my toes. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. As Ms. McLean had mentioned, this is an annexation of approximately 263 acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission, along with the applicant, amended the request to a combination of R1 and R2, as you can see on the screen. So, that's approximately 117 acres adjacent to the Comanche Trace development for R1, and the three-plus acres on the riverfront across 173, and the balance of that property being R2. There is no current zoning on the property since it is not inside the city limits, adjacent to the south. Comanche Trace is a planned development district for the golf course and single-family community. To the northwest, you've got Kerrville-Shriner Park, zoned public and institutional. A portion of the property is part of the catalyst area, and the remainder is agriculture and outdoor tourism. And if you recall from the 2018 plan, that ag and outdoor tourism was a placeholder until cases came in to look at what was appropriate for that area. In this case, adjacent to single-family, the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommended approval, as it is consistent with the comp plan, with a 4-1 vote. There's the description of that catalyst area. And here's the preliminary layout that the applicant provided, showing a potential layout of the property for that development. It does include the principal arterial that would go from 173 to 16 for the portion of the property that they control, as well as a collector running through the neighborhood to get the residents out to 173. And with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after public hearing. And I'll also add, Ms. Fairmont is here from the applicant with the presentation.
Thank you. Before we go to the public hearing, and as citizens speakers, does anyone have questions for Mr. Paxton?
Is there any way they can turn up the hearing? I'm hearing a real cheap, and I can't hear anything.
Mr. Paxton or me, or both?
Both.
They say I need to talk into this microphone better. Better? A little? All right. Is Martin, maybe he can turn up the volume just a little?
He's going to continue, Martin will continue to adjust it, so it doesn't interfere with anything, but we can get it as loud as we can.
We're going to try. You just keep me posted. Any comments or questions for Mr. Paxton before we open the public hearing?
I have a question.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm asking the council first.
Oh.
No, that's okay. We'll get to y'all. Any questions? All right. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. We'll start with those who've signed up first. Is that okay? Do you need anything else?
Did you want the applicant to present first?
Applicant, would you like to say some words to us? Please do.
Thank you.
Martin, can you switch to their PowerPoint, please?
Perfect. Hi, good evening. I'll try to speak loudly. My name is Ashley Fairmont. I work with a law firm called Killen Griffin in Fairmont. I'm here tonight on behalf of D.R. Horton, who would be the purchaser and developer of this 263 acres. We do have a quick presentation. You all know, I think, where the property is, so, there we go. So, we initially started our rezoning request with an R2, which is a 45-foot-wide lot at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. We had a lot of discussion about if we could change to R1. And so, what we came up with at that meeting, which Drew talked about, was a mixture of R1 and R2. So, the intent, let me see if I can, no, okay. Sorry, I think this is our old, our old one, so, I apologize. But as Drew showed on his map, we have about 117 acres that we changed to the R1 zoning, so that would be the larger lot, single-family. So, those lots would be 50-foot-wide minimum. And what D.R. Horton is looking at for those lots is actually about 6,200 square feet on average. And then the R2 property, which would be kind of the remainder fronting on Bandera Highway, would be the R2, which are 45-foot wide. All of the lots would be a minimum of 125 feet deep. What D.R. Horton has found is that there's a lot of demand to have kind of the longer lots, so that people can have larger backyards. The idea behind this community is to be, I don't want necessarily to say starter home, but for young families, for people maybe purchasing their first homes, price point is looking at probably $350,000 to $420,000 for home. This is a really, also a really big piece of property, so it will take some time to develop. So, they're looking at probably at least a 10-year period to develop the entire community. But that is the idea, is to create a new community here with, you know, kind of that middle-range housing to provide some additional options for people in the area to purchase homes who maybe can't, or maybe want to buy a new home. So, that is really the intent. But there is a lot of work that, you know, needs to be done, obviously, for this to happen. So, as Drew mentioned, you know, there is the major thoroughfare plan, which shows and has a road that would be on the northern, we'll call it Map North, side of this property, so that is part of the master thoroughfare plan. So, D.R. Horton would be responsible for constructing that. Also anticipating turn lanes on Bandera Highway, that would be needed. But again, that would go through the entire traffic study process. I know drainage, there are questions, so I'll work from this, but can I walk up? Okay, just to understand. I apologize, this is the map we presented to Planning and Zoning Commission. This portion here, this change to R1, and the southern part, is being updated to show larger lots. I could have done that, sorry.
Drew, can you re-point that? I'm sorry, since we can't see that screen.
So, this portion would be the R1, and then again, the additional lot across on the riverfront.
Yes, and thank you. Just on that riverfrontage lot, there were questions at Planning and Zoning Commission about, you know, what can we zone that, because D.R. Horton has no intent of building homes there. The idea is that it would be an amenity for the community, probably have their amenity center possibly on that property, but otherwise, it would not be built for homes. So, that's why we're changing that piece to R1, which was really the least intense zoning we could do that would still allow for that amenity center to go there. But, so, the other thing that, you know, came up, and you can see on this plan, are the detention ponds. So, obviously drainage will need to be studied. We know there's a lot of questions concerned, so there'll be a full drainage study on the property. Right now, on this plan, what we have here is some very large areas that would accommodate detention, so here and all through here. And then, you know, water and sewer, obviously, we'll have to study that as well. There will be a lot of improvements to have water and sewer at this property, so that will be quite the undertaking, I think, to get those things here. But again, you know, the idea, this is, this is kind of a maxed-out type site plan, but probably looking at a total now of about 1,150 homes, potentially. So, with that, I know that's a pretty high level, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant's representative? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
What I'd like to do is open up the public hearing. We'll start with those who've signed up to speak first, all right? Now, let's open the public hearing at 6:14. Who's our first speaker?
J.C. Wheatcraft.
Mr. Wheatcraft, if you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record.
I'm J.C. Wheatcraft. I'm with 2670 and 2760 Bandera Highway. We're the connecting property there, all the way around the edge. Oh, sorry. Good evening. My name is J.C. Wheatcraft, and I represent the Wheatcraft family, owner of 80 acres at 2670 Bandera Highway, which shares two boundary lines with the Meek Ranch. I'm fortunate to live and work on this land, which has been in our family for multiple generations. We are here today to strongly oppose the annexation and rezoning of this property. Highway 173, safety concerns. Highway 173 is already dangerous and overburned road, and the last year it has become nearly impossible to pull out of a driveway safely. The highway serves as a key route for both residential and commercial traffic, and I've spent countless minutes waiting for a break in traffic, sometimes four to five minutes or longer, just before it's safe to cross. Just a few months ago, I witnessed a tragic fatal accident outside my home. Adding more traffic from rezoning this property to R1 or R2 would only worsen this danger. By approving this proposal, you're risking lives and putting public safety in jeopardy. Number two, impact on wildlife. The hill country is home to diverse wildlife, and the proposed development would destroy critical habitats. The influx of new residents and infrastructure will have a devastating effect on the local wildlife and environment that so many of us cherish. Number three, erosion of the hill country, way of life. The hill country isn't just a place, it's a way of life, and about enjoying the outdoors, connecting with nature, and living in harmony with the land. The thought of this area becoming a dense residential development threatens the very essence of this place. Will my family still be able to enjoy the peace and serenity we've cherished for so long, or will it be replaced by thousands of new neighbors? This decision will forever alter the character of the hill country, and once it's gone, it cannot be restored. Number four, property values and community identity. We've been advised that rezoning to R2 will lower property values in the surrounding area. The rural beauty of this land is what makes it special, and rezoning proposal would fundamentally change that. It's not about the property values, it's about the loss of the community's identity and what makes this area unique. Number five, infrastructure and resource strain. How will the city of Kerrville manage the increased demand in water, sewage, and the other utilities? Our infrastructure is already stretched thin, and adding hundreds of new homes will only worsen these issues. The impact on residents, both financially and in terms of quality of life, will be significant. Housing needs. We understand the need for more housing in Kerrville, but rezoning this property in its current form is not the right solution. We urge you to reconsider. Is this the Kerrville 2050 plan about improving quality of life for all, or is it sacrificing the unique character of our town for short-term gains? This development will replace the beauty of the hill country with something that doesn't belong in this landscape. We are not against progress, but we are deeply opposed to the destruction of what makes the Kerrville hill country so special. We ask you to carefully consider the long-term consequences of this rezoning decision, for the community, for future generations, and for the land that sustains us. Thank you for your time and for considering our concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Wheatcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Wheatcraft.
Brett Henneke?
Probably applauding is not the best thing. You can do it, but I'd prefer, if it's possible, not to do it. All right? Who's next?
Brett Henneke?
Mr. Henneke.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Fred Henneke. I live at 2595 Bandera Highway, which is immediately adjacent to the, you misspelled my name, which is immediately adjacent to the three-acre property on the riverside. I've been enjoying the beauty and serenity of the Meek Ranch since 1973. I've had great opportunity with the family who lived there and took me in as one of theirs, and it is somewhat of an emotional time to face the loss of that part of the last 52 years. But, we move on. I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission and the council for listening to my concerns and addressing my concerns in the proposed annexation. There are a lot of issues that you all have to face. Based on past experience, I have a certain understanding of the difficulties you face in addressing those issues. But I would urge the council to listen to Mr. Wheatcraft's comments, and I'd associate myself with some of them, to the maximum extent you can, in particular, the traffic. 173 is a state highway, not a lot you could do with it. About the best you could do is put in turn lanes. And as Councilwoman Hughes knows, I was part of the reason we got the speed limit downloaded as one of the 30 sub accidents that you referenced along that stretch. So, I thank you again, and good luck to you in your deliberations.
Thanks, Fred. Thank you.
Krista Lovett?
Hi. I'm Krista Lovett. I live in Comanche Trace, adjacent property, and I'm here with a group of other people that, and I'd like for y'all to stand up.
Please do.
The people who are opposed to the annexation, please.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming. But anyway, and thank you, the city. The city's done a great job in Kerrville, planning for economic development, water, recreation, all awesome things. And I feel like we're just throwing a wrench in this thing now. It's, you know, why stop doing all these wonderful things? Because now, we're proposing putting this community here that the economic development plan has not really found necessary. The homes at the price range that they're proposing have been fulfilled. We don't need any more at this price. It's time to move on to the next phase of what Kerrville needs as far as homes. Of course, the next thing that we've brought up is the water. I don't feel like it's been thoroughly investigated. Yes, there's probably enough water for a few years, but then what? What do we do? And, you know, after looking at the news in California, is there enough water to put out a fire even? I mean, have we even investigated that? The park is right next door, could easily burn up. I am concerned about the drainage. There's a big hill there. The water is already going into homes at the end of Dry Hollow, and it's just been ignored. And people have done what they can to keep it out of their yards. What's going to happen when it's diverted? I hear them say that they have access to property that goes to Highway 16, but that's not completely set in concrete. That's a maybe. So, we all know what it's going to look like when 4,500 cars try to enter 173 at 7:30 in the morning. That's going to be really interesting. You know, it always floors me that cities do not plan ahead of time, that it happens after the fact. I think Kerrville's better than that. There's going to have to be a huge widening of the highway there, and lights and flow of traffic. Why do we have to suffer and wait for the development to be there before that happens? If each house has three cars, which is very probable, multiply that by the number of houses, that's a lot of cars coming out of there. And we need to think of the safety first in that situation. I am not against development. I was 35 years in New Braunfels. We were builders. I understand it, but let's think smart. That's all. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Wolf?
Mr. Wolf.
Jerry Wolf and I live in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Kerrville, out near Ingram. I could kind of throw a rock, and I could hit the boundary line. I am not on city water. I am on Aqua, Texas, on a well that's within the subdivision I live in. So, I'm here to talk about water. When I heard about this, and I believe, ma'am, you said there's about 1,150 homes? Is that correct? I thought, man, well, let's add everything up that we've been talking about in the way of homes here in Kerrville. I don't remember all the subdivision names, but the Lanier one, I believe, is around a little over 100 homes. The second one now is getting ready to get started, that's 500 homes. And Lanar has an option for an additional 500 homes to build. So, there's 1,000 homes right there. This is 1,150, and you've got 700 homes in Whiskey Ridge, and what, 260 apartments in the apartment complex that's just started construction in the baseball complex, and in there, I believe, also an apartment complex being built near Peterson Hospital. So, you're looking at over 3,000 new water taps. And Mr. Barron corrected me if I'm wrong, but I think from a public information request I made a couple of years ago, I believe there's around 7,000 and odd residential water taps in Kerrville now? Yeah, I know, I'm off top of your head. Okay. I believe there is. So, essentially, you're doubling the number of water taps. And relatively, I see you said 10 years. Well, perhaps, perhaps not. They would build houses as fast as there is demand. As you can see, what we saw with Lanar one, that was supposed to take quite a while, and now they're just about finished there, and Lanar two has started. So, where's the water coming from? I know you had a presentation here a while a month ago with a consulting engineering company who did the long-range water plan, came in and went back over it. But that water that you need is standing below my feet. It's in the aquifers. And that aquifers have to supply not just Kerrville, but the water needs of everyone in Kerr County. If Kerrville takes that water, half of your economic base is going to start moving. That's the people like me that live in the county. If we don't have water, we can't live here. So, it doesn't do Kerrville any good to take all the water. So, I think this is something that you have to give some very serious consideration. I could go a lot deeper into water. I don't think tonight is the time to do it. I don't think we're prepared for it either, but I'd be happy to do it with you sometime. There was one other point I was going to make, and I can't think of it right now. But the big issue, though, to me, is water. It's a great idea for more homes. I'm not against growth, but this growth is too rapid. It's way too much. Kerrville was happy for years and years with 1% growth per year, and this totally accelerates past that point. All right, thank you for your time.
Of course.
That's the end of the citizen speakers. Who's signed up?
Now, this is a public hearing, so you didn't have to sign up. If anybody else wants to speak, please do. We're not that scary. Come up if you want to. All right, we're going to close the public hearing.
I'm going to call on Ms. Lovett real quick. Didn't you have a question for Mr. Paxton?
I did. It was about...
Oh, we need you to hit the microphone, I'm sorry. We have to record it, I'm sorry.
Sorry to push you back on the spot.
Well, you know, there was reference to getting out the back way to 16.
Yes.
And I know that that's just kind of wishful thinking at this point, I think. Is there something more substantial that's happened since that first idea?
It is on our master thoroughfare plan, so whenever that property is developed, that road would be required to connect.
Okay. Can I ask one more question?
Of course.
I know there's, you know, a lot of infrastructure that's going to have to happen. Is it possible to be able to ask that price range if only D.R. Horton is responsible for those costs? Or will we be seeing you come back to the city asking us to help you?
Who are you asking the question?
The D.R. Horton representative. Or anybody that's represented D.R. Horton.
No one can.
Sure, so, yes, there will be significant costs for the infrastructure for this community. And that's part of the reason also why, to keep the houses in the price point they are, why there are this number of houses as well, because there is quite a bit of infrastructure that's going to need to be built by D.R. Horton. So, that is D.R. Horton's responsibility to build the infrastructure for the water, for the sewer, for the drainage, and the traffic improvements as well. So, they are responsible for those costs.
Okay, it's not unusual for a developer, though, to come back to the city and ask for help. And that's one of our fears, just wanted to let you know.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate that. We have not submitted a request for that.
All right. The public hearing is still open, I think, isn't it? Did I close it? Anybody else? Come on up. My wife taught, remember your family, many years ago in first grade.
I live on the property there, adjacent to everything. It's all connecting. And you're talking about your water runoff and whatnot. How am I, to be sure, and my family, to be sure, that that water's not all gonna end up down in my property? It is lower than yours. And also, to keep the residents from coming onto my property, I've had issues with Comanche Trace residents sneaking onto my property as well. But with that many, that close...
Sure. I mean, everyone's yards will be fenced, obviously, but I don't... I hope there are no trespassers, and I apologize if people are trespassing on your property. Regarding the drainage, I think that actually might be a city question, because we are required to comply with city code, which means that we cannot impact your property with the drainage from this property. So, there will have to be studies that are city-approved. And then, they will also approve any improvements that have to be made, like those detention ponds. And we have to demonstrate that they won't impact you any different than what it is now.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Go ahead, please, Mr. Wolf. But you have to come at the microphone, please.
Thank you, Jerry Wolf. I remember my question now. What about the, as I understand it, the Meek family owned the water rights, senior water rights, on the Guadalupe. And you're buying the house that sits down on the river. So, is what's happening to those water rights in this purchase? Are you buying those, too?
I don't... They have not come up in my discussion, so I'm not sure. I don't wanna tell you yes or no. I don't know that.
Anything been discussed with the city about it? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing at 6:32. Let me start the conversation by asking our city attorney a question. If we annexed this property, are we required to provide that property with city water and city services and even city sewer?
You would. You'd have to provide this property, anything you provide like properties in the city.
Gotcha.
Yes.
I have a concern, and it may be, I might be the only one that has a concern, but we are asked to annex a property, and we don't even know the specifics of the project. I saw your brief presentation, and thank you for that. But it was brief, and we haven't had a chance to even consider the impact that development would have, not only on the people that live nearby, but the entire community. In my opinion, this is putting the cart before the horse. We don't know what we would be obligated to provide that property if we annex it. What I think we really need to do is get details, details, from D.R. Horton about what will be required of the city. I may be the only one up here who feels uncomfortable annexing the property without knowing those details. All right, any other comments or questions?
No, I would just, ditto what you just said. Water is the first thing that comes to my mind, but also the density of the proposed development. I don't think that is appropriate in an area. It might be in others, but not in this area. And that goes back to the 2050 plan itself. But I agree with the mayor that we have not, we have a lot of questions, and serious questions. So, I think before I could approve annexing this, I would need answers to those questions.
I'm gonna really kinda piggyback off what you said, Mayor, because we've seen it in the past when somebody's come in and wanted to annex, or we did annex, and they come in and they wanna build. Now, ma'am, you say that the infrastructure will be done by D.R. Horton, and everything would be done that way. But you can't guarantee us that y'all would not come back to the city and say, hey, we want y'all to subsidize our infrastructure, our curbs, our gutters, you know, things like that. We're talking 1,150 houses on 263 acres, so we're putting about four houses per acre. So, we're talking about quarter-acre lots. Mr. Wheatcraft, you made a great point a while ago. It's, we live in Kerrville, we know what Kerrville is. Comanche Trace is right there, probably has some of the highest property values in Kerrville. R1, R2 is going to drive those property values down. There's just a lot of what-ifs. Mr. Wolf, thank you for your point on water. It's 1,150 new straws in the pitcher, or in the aquifer, so to say. It's, you know... State law requires that council make a finding that surrounding the area of the property is in the best public interest. We received several emails from citizens. We had three citizens speak this evening. We had six residents stand up to say no. And then, we had numerous emails about everything. To me, that doesn't sound like it's in the best interest for the public. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, that's why I'm gonna vote against it, so.
Oh, I think that Mr. Wolf made good points about how many lots and units of apartments and they're all that are on the books. And I think, I believe in the 2050 plan, and I believe that we have shortage in housing, and the 2050 plan says, you know, we have these ways we might be able to get water to address all that, but we haven't really sunk our teeth into exactly what we're gonna do about getting enough water for all of that. We have to, we had, we've had one workshop a little bit about where we are, but we really got to come up with a more definite plan about how do we service water on all these units that we've... This is more units than I think. I've lived here 18 years, and I've never seen so many units like on the board, you know, that could come on. And I know it's gonna take a little while to absorb those units, but on the other hand, it's also gonna take some while for us to decide what water source are we gonna have, and how much recycle, how much conservation, and how much combination of things are gonna make it possible. I think it will be possible, but I don't know that we know what that, you know, how those are really gonna have happen. So, I think we gotta, we need to get in front of that problem about, especially about the water, before we add such a big chunk of units.
Ms. Hughes.
Okay. For the last five years, I have been focused on the 2050 comprehensive plan and workforce housing. It's been in the forefront for the entire five years that I have sat on this council. But also, as part of the 2050 plan, it's keeping the uniqueness and the quintessence that is Kerrville. That is also a guiding principle of the 2050 plan. I've had deep concerns about Banderas Highway and the influx of traffic that is already on that road. I tried to get the speed limit reduced. My friend, Fran, over there, tried to spearhead that with me. And the bottom line is, I think it is okay to pull the reins back a little bit on the affordable housing initiative that we've been working on for the last five years, and dedicate some time to really thinking about our future water needs and tackling some of that. Because we may have water now, but every tap we put in the ground lessens the amount of water that we are going to have. And it does concern me. So, at this time, I cannot, with good conscience, vote for annexing that property.
Mr. Hayes, I need to ask a procedural question.
Yes, sir.
We need to have a motion to deny.
You should, yes, as opposed to just passing it. I mean, not passing it, but just letting it go.
All right, is there a motion that...
I will make that motion.
Deny this ordinance, number 202503. Is there a second?
Second.
Many seconds.
Many seconds.
Many seconds.
But I think I heard Jeff first.
That's fine.
Any discussion? All those in favor of denying the annexation request, so vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you for being here this evening. Don't say we don't listen to you. Now, we're gonna talk about gas pipelines in a little bit, if anybody wants to stay. Number 5A is Mr. Tash.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Tash, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening. Ordinance number 2025-04.
Thank you for reading it in. I'm sorry, I'm so... He even circled it.
An ordinance amending Article 2 of Chapter 38 Municipal Court of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas to clarify various sections, add sections in compliance with state law, and to remove obsolete language, ordering publication, and providing other matters related to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Shelley, I circled it, too, to remind you to ask you to read it in.
I have one more to read in.
I've got it circled.
Good evening. So, this will be easy, I believe. This is really just a cleanup ordinance. Our chapter pertaining to our municipal court has been on the books since the 1960s, and a lot has changed with state law since then. So, a lot of the things that we had in our ordinance are no longer necessary, because that is addressed, the practices and procedures are addressed in the state statutes. So, we don't need the duplication within our code. Also, our code has obsolete language. It still refers to work farms, and we don't have that. We don't have jails anymore. We contract with the county for that. So, we don't need that in our code either. So, we need to remove all of the things that are not necessary to be there. And then, we have left everything that is not already addressed by the state, or things that were in the code that we wanted to maintain. So, in municipal court, juries are, jurors are not entitled to reimbursement for their time. That is not included in the state statute. So, if we want that, we need to keep that in the code. We kept that in the code, but we did take out the required fee amount to put in our fee schedule in case y'all ever wanted to change that easily in the future. Also, we added a provision so that our chief clerk could appoint assistant clerks with the approval of the city manager. Right now, she already has assistant clerks. We just need to include that to make it so that it is what we are actually doing right now. Also, our technology fund was set to expire in 2005, so we just need to include an update of that, keep the technology fund, keep the maintenance fund in. But we are getting rid of the fee amount, because the state has a percentage of any fees collected in the state in the court, and how they're supposed to be divided among all the funds. So, as long as we know the amount that this court is taking in, we have the percentage within the state statute, so we determine how that's supposed to be divided. That is basically what this amendment is doing. I'm happy to answer any questions, if y'all have any.
Questions for Mr. Tash?
Nope, looks clean.
Are you sure we don't have work farms?
The last I checked, we did not.
Okay. If there are no questions for Mr. Tash, is there a motion then to approve?
I'll make the motion that city council adopt ordinance 2025-04 to remove duplicative or obsolete provisions of Chapter 38, Article 2, and the statutorily mandated provision relating to the Kerrville Municipal Seal and clarify several provisions.
Second.
Got a second by Brenda.
I'll get in there in a minute.
Any discussion? All favors a vote, and it's unanimous.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Now, for the meat of the evening. An ordinance which will be read in.
Ordinance number 2025-05, an ordinance deleting Article 5 Natural Gas Pipelines of Chapter 110 Utilities of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause, and providing other matters related to the subject. We do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Mr. Hayes.
You were so focused on disparaging natural gas issues that you just forgot.
I'm sorry to make a stink.
William just talked about an ordinance that was being cleaned up. This is gonna be an ordinance that is cleaned out, because we don't need it. State law has superseded this ordinance. It's been on the books since, I think, the late 60s. We've only amended it one time, which is way before even my time here. You know, occasionally, I go through the code, and I see these chapters, and I think, why is that there? We don't need that there. Let's get rid of that, save some paper. That's what we're doing here. Again, state law has superseded all of these provisions, and then we have, of course, we have a franchise agreement with Atmos Gas that covers the bulk of this. So, my recommendation is that you all adopt this ordinance on first reading, and then on second reading, if you adopt it again, presumably, we'll get rid of it from the code.
Thank you. I'm not completely sure that I wasn't part of the amendment process last time. Do you have a citizen speaker?
Yes, sir, Nikki Caines.
Ms. Caines.
Good evening, Nikki Caines. I was glad that you mentioned that it's a state law that's kind of taking more of the responsibility. But my concern as a gas consumer and a citizen's here, I'd like to know if you could explain what that franchise is between Atmos and the city and our users, and if by deleting this, is there any legal ramifications where somebody is not going to be taking responsibility or accountability for any problems with gas lines?
You said a lot, and I think...
I know, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And in general, the answer is no. The franchise agreement we have with Atmos basically does, the one big thing is it sets a fee, or we negotiated a fee with them for use of our right-of-way. There's also some provisions in there. If we need their gas line moved, they have agreed to move it. And then, you've been around, certainly the last few years, you know that virtually every year, Atmos comes into the city, and we have to approve their fee increase, and they actually do that. I can't remember a year they haven't asked for that. So, those are the two mechanisms we have. And so, the franchise agreement covers most everything locally, and then state law covers the aspect of fee increases and the fees, or I'm sorry, the rates that they charge consumers. Everything that you said is gonna be covered in either state law or the franchise agreement.
So, any liability for a break in the line, an explosion, or whatever else? Is that covered by state law, or is that within the franchise agreement?
That'll be state law.
That'll be state law?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My last question, if it's okay. I had someone, I didn't even meet them, I have, I've only spoken with them, who mentioned that she was informed that there was kind of like master shut-off valves for the gas lines that are supplied to our homes in case of an electrical power outage. Is that, or is that not true?
I don't know. I'm not sure Stuart is gone. We could provide that information to you. I assume they've got safety systems built in.
Are you talking about directly to the home?
Right.
Yes, ma'am. So, fire department typically has key access, and Chief Maloney could speak to that if you need to, but yes, there is, on the side of your house, you'll see your gas meter. There is a shut-off valve that fire department would go to if your house catches on fire to prevent gas leaks.
If my house catches on fire, but if there is a citywide, or even a neighborhood, power outage, that doesn't automatically shut off gas, or does it?
No, ma'am.
No?
No, ma'am.
So, I'm always gonna have gas? All right. Well, I didn't mean that, but yes.
We'll be at your house.
Yeah, unless you shut it off at the house, you're gonna have gas.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. That's a...
We'll be over for breakfast when our power's out.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
I didn't hear, though. Who was that?
I'm over here, the tall one. I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2025-05 on first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. There's no need to go into executive session. Do we have any items for future agendas?
Well, more water studies, workshops, whatever we can do. I think that's coming.
I know that's coming.
Yeah.
Any other?
I'll have it to start.
Get aware, we do have some big things coming down the track, and we will tackle them with gusto. I'm not hearing anything else. I'll adjourn this meeting at 6:51.
That is the new record.